All right, ladies and gentlemen, we are back into public session. The first item on the agenda is the public hearing on the superintendent contract. Just as a, just to provide some context, in early May, a district in a county not far from here approached our superintendent with a job offer, which we were able to discuss with the superintendent when she came forward and said that she had this particular offer. Fortunately for us, she was gracious enough to allow us the opportunity to provide a counter offer, and the counter offer certainly met the needs of the superintendent. And so tonight, what we are doing is reviewing the contract. We will have public comment on the contract, and then we will vote on the contract. One of the most important things, the most important role of a board member, is the hiring of the superintendent. That is the most important job that board members have in this role. The fact that our superintendent is finishing her 10th year with the district, and the fact that we're able to enter into a new five-year contract to extend that period speaks to both the support that the superintendent has from this board, and also, I think, I won't speak for the superintendent, but also the fact that the superintendent actually enjoys being here. If that wasn't the case, I don't think anything we would have been able to say would have been able to keep her here. So I think that, I know that I speak on behalf of the board, that we're all, we're very pleased that we were able to come to an agreement to allow the superintendent to continue for the next several years here, and to provide continuity for the district. Continuity of leadership in public education is probably one of the most important aspects of ensuring that you have a district that is well-run, so that you're not having to constantly go through churn in leadership and churn in personnel. We've been very fortunate to have stability in our leadership, both not only with the superintendent, but with our business administrator, and also with our director of HR, who unfortunately will be leaving us at the, at the end of this month, but we're also excited about the very competent replacement that will be taking her place. So with that, I'll open it up for any board comments before we open it up for public comment. Any comments on the superintendent contract? Seeing none, I will open the floor for any public comment regarding the superintendent contract only. Seeing none, I will close public comments, and I will entertain a motion to approve item C1.
Motion to approve item C1.
Need a second? Discussion. We'll call Mr. Seiz.
Mr. Bernberg.
Yes.
Mr. Maggio.
Yes.
Ms. Lee.
Yes.
Mr. Mayechek.
Yes.
Sober.
Yes.
Potter.
Yes.
Prassa.
Yes.
And Mr. Morrison.
Yes. Dr. Jewitt, do you have any comments?
I just wanted to say that I'm, I'm truly humbled by the board's support, and I love it here. I, I feel so privileged to have been able to lead this district for the past 10 years, and it was really overwhelming, the show of support from the board when we were discussing my future. And we are in the midst of a lot of great things, and so I really look forward to getting to continue those. It's, you know, a lot of superintendents are only in districts for a couple of years, and you get to start something, but you don't necessarily get to see it through. And actually, just talking to a parent whose last child graduated about six years ago, and, you know, hearing about where her children are now, and, you know, what else we can do here to make sure that, that our students succeed and actually getting to see the fruits of that. And we have some really exciting things going on as well. I'm really excited for the STEAM lab that we're going to be finishing, and some of the other projects. So I'm just, I'm actually a little bit overwhelmed right now, and I normally am not at a loss for words, but it's, it's really exciting, because I truly have enjoyed my time here and really look forward to the future here. And I'm in a very unique position in this district where I get to be in the building, and so I actually get to know the students, because I think that was, that's one of the hardest things, going from the classroom to becoming an administrator, is you're worried about losing that connection with the students. And I'm very lucky here that I still get to be among all of the teachers and all of the students, and get to see them, and know a lot of them quite well. So thank you so much, and, and I am, you know, I'm truly privileged to work with a board who always keeps students first, and with an absolutely world-class staff in this building, and obviously, the tremendous students that we have here. So, thank you.
Thank you, and congratulations, Dr. Jewitt. We are excited to have you remain with us, so. All right, with that, we do have a packed agenda this evening, so we're going to move on, and we will start with our, oh, I'm sorry, board correspondence. We did receive one letter regarding, we received one letter from somebody outside of the district regarding the summer reading, but given the fact that we have already made the decision on that summer reading, there's no action that needs to be taken on that. With that, I'll move into reports and presentations, and we will start with our student representative comments for the last time this year. Thank you, Ms. Prassa.
Last for all, I guess. Madison Landau, a junior, and Dania Arabi, a sophomore, along with history teachers Mary Sock and Jamie Lot Jones, were selected and will be participating in beta testing AI for the Jewish Federation of the Righteous. You may have seen a CBS 60 Minutes piece, but Leslie Stahl, where she is interacting with a hologram of a Holocaust survivor who has passed away. The group will be vetting the hologram responses of two New Jersey Holocaust survivors, and collecting the data on how the AI responds to their questions. History teacher Jim Carden brought in many Civil War relics for his US One CP classes. The items included cartridge boxes, canteens, cannonballs, a Confederate saber, and Confederate money, many original photos, including an Emperor-type photo of Lincoln from his 1860 campaign that Abraham Lincoln gave out as a gift to his influential supporters, a tin type of African-American soldier in Union uniform, and various other relics. Some students were visibly excited to touch a photo that Lincoln had once touched as well. The students were allowed to handle and examine the artifacts, and then use them as prompts to be incorporated into a creative writing project about the common soldier's appearance, experience during the Civil War. On May 31st, Dr. Wei Dai from Rutgers University met with our students in the neuroscience club to discuss her research into neurodegenerative diseases. For athletics, we are very proud of our warrior teams and their determination on, on the field of this, play of this season. Our boys tennis team is the 2023 Skyline Conference Raritan Division Champions. Our softball team is the 2023 Somerset County Champions. Maggie O'Reilly is the North Two Group Four Sectional Champion for pole vault. So congratulations to all of them, and a special shout-out to the B&amp;G staff for the maintenance of our fields and gyms, keeping them in excellent condition for our contests with each changing season. Thank you. And I just want to say thank you to all the board, and especially Ms. Jewitt. We know we're going to miss you a lot, and we just thank you for all your support and for being here.
It's been great working with all of you, and, you know, being a part of this experience. Student participation is so important in school. It's been great that we've been able to.
Great, thank you.
Well, and you're not done yet, so we do want to recognize you. Actually, I do have a question for you before. So we've changed the format in recent years, where you now actually serve as a board rep for multiple years, where we try and have, so that there's a little bit of a transition. And I'm just curious if you've, you know, found that you like that, and like having the experience so that it's, you know, it used to be just students would serve for a year, and sometimes I think by the time they get the hang of it, their, you know, their reign would be up. So what have you thought about getting to serve for multiple years?
Yeah, I've enjoyed, I definitely enjoyed it, and I've definitely, like, learned a lot. I feel like one year is probably maybe too short, just because, like, we don't go, like, all the time, so it's, like, good to, like, get a hang of it, and I think we should definitely do, like, an older person, younger person type of situation, too. Like, that was good, like, when Jed was here, and we were, like, both, like, worked together. I feel like he gave me, got, like, a lot of good advice, and then I, like, helped Ryan, like, you know, come into it, so I feel like it's, like, good to be on for, like, multiple, and I get to know, like, all of you better, so, yeah.
Do you want to each share with us, too, and after Ryan, after you answer, what your plans are for next year, Carly?
I mean, I pretty much agree with Carly. I still feel like I just really hit my stride, and it's a shame that we're leaving, but still, I do think having more than a year really helps me understand the politics more of the school, and be able to share that with my peers, so it's been really great having this experience for an extended period of time. I'll be going to American University to study psychology in the fall.
And I'll be going to University of Maryland to study information science.
Well, we really want to thank you for your service and participation, and, you know, I think it always is humbling to all of us to have students sitting with us on the board, so we really appreciate that, and on behalf of the board and administration, we have a little token of appreciation for you. And just so you know, you're always welcome to come back to a board meeting if you start to miss us or this, there's always the opportunity, so you are more than welcome. And if, Bob, I don't know if you want to say anything, but thank you so much.
No, just to thank you for your service and the time on the board. Certainly enjoyed working with both of you, and particularly Ryan, over the past two years that you've been here, so we really appreciate that. So congratulations to you both. Dr. Jewitt has a little gift for you. And since we are in recognition mode at this point in time, we will move to the recognition of our retiring staff members, and I will turn it over to Dr. Jewitt.
Thank you. This is a fun night. I get to do all sorts of great recognition, and it's nice to see our retirees brought their entourages with them. So this is, it's their fan clubs. It's actually, it's nice, we've had a series of celebrations of our retirees over the past few weeks, and I'm really glad that I get to recognize Patty Grunther tonight, as Patty Day was on Friday, and when I'd gotten there, I missed you, I had to go to my county meeting, so I'm really glad that you're able to be here tonight, and we can enjoy some cake together. So, that being said, you know what, I am going to go up to the lectern, and if each retiree could come up there. Patty, if you wouldn't mind joining me up there? This proclamation regarding Patty Grunther shall be read at the public meeting of the Wachong Hills Regional High School Board of Education on June 13th, 2023. Whereas Patty Grunther was first employed by WHHS in 2007 as a teacher of Italian, and whereas she coordinated, chaperoned, and hosted for very successful academic and cultural exchanges to Florence, Italy, and whereas she created an award-winning intensive summer Italian program for high school students at Montclair State University in 2017, which received recognition as a best-practice model by the Italian Embassy, and whereas she brought her knowledge and enthusiasm of teaching English, Italian, and linguistics to Montclair State University, Bloomfield College, and Kane University, and whereas she received the Distinguished Career Service Award from the Association of American Teachers of Italian in 2019, the association in which she has served as a regional representative and as national co-chair of the advocacy committee, and whereas she inspired her students to learn about and develop a love for Italian culture, including ancient Rome, Renaissance art, culinary traditions, immigration history, contemporary life, and social justice issues such as the Black Italy movement, and whereas, after a career as an outstanding educator spanning 37 years in Italy and New Jersey, she has decided to retire. Now therefore be it resolved that the Wachong Hills Regional Board of Education extends its heartfelt gratitude for Patty Grunther's 16 years of service and devotion to our school, and wishes her a healthy and happy retirement to pursue her passions, travel, and whatever adventures lie ahead.
It's bittersweet, as always, these kinds of situations. I just very quickly want to thank, first of all, anyone from the community, the families for entrusting your children to my care, because that is, without a doubt, the best thing that happened for me here, was the relationship that I have with my students. I'm so happy to see Ryan here. You may not know it, but I recently gave her the Outstanding Student in Italian Award as in senior awards, so it's lovely to have her here. And I want to thank my colleagues, who I have worked with the most amazing faculty and staff. I have felt supported and appreciated in a way that made my job even more meaningful than it already was. I'd like to thank two administrators, who I felt were incredibly supportive of me, my supervisor Brad Commerford, and Ms. Mary Ellen Phelan, the, what was the title exactly here? Wait, Head of Curriculum and Instruction. And I literally feel like crying, but I won't, and I thank you all, and, and maybe I'll see you in Italy sometime. Thanks.
Patty, if you're going to be there in about two weeks, I'll see you in Italy. Well, I've been practicing, and I've been thinking of you as I've been practicing my Italian, so.
Ms. Jane Giannelli, will you come up and join me, please? This proclamation regarding Jane Giannelli shall be read at the public meeting of the Wachong Hills Regional High School Board of Education on June 13th, 2023. Whereas Jane Giannelli has been a member of the Special Services Department at Wachong Hills Regional High School for 22 years, serving students with disabilities here and in previous school districts for a total of 33 years, and whereas she started her career as an administrative executive assistant at the New Jersey Institute of Technology, followed by a brief career change to a legal secretary at a law firm that represented school districts. And whereas, her career objective was to work with students in a school environment where the staff and students could benefit from her education, professional, and community experience. And whereas, her passion for working in education initially led her to the Verona School District, and eventually to Wachong Hills Regional High School District, where her talent and commitment enabled her to support families with students facing academic challenges. And whereas, she has served not only as an outstanding role model for all of our students, but also as an active member of the Wachong Hills community. Now therefore be it resolved that the Wachong Hills Regional Board of Education extends its heartfelt gratitude for Jane Giannelli's 22 years of service and devotion to our school, and wishes her a happy and healthy retirement to pursue her passions, travel, and whatever adventures lie ahead.
Thank you, everyone, I really appreciate, I really enjoyed my years here, and I will always remember them, and I will remember everybody that I worked with, and the students, and the faculty and staff. Thank you.
I feel like I keep having to say goodbye to Beth, and it just keeps reminding me that she's not going to be in our office pretty soon, so I don't, I don't like this. I enjoy celebrating her because she deserves it, but the reminder that she's leaving is getting more and more difficult. This proclamation regarding Beth Scheiderman shall be read at the public meeting of the Wachong Hills Regional High School Board of Education on June 13th, 2023. Whereas Beth Scheiderman was first employed by Wachong Hills Regional High School in April 2003, and whereas she has been noted for her ability to coordinate a vast array of responsibilities, from providing school psychology services to directing all aspects of the Special Services Department, and the Human Resources and Professional Development Department, doing so with innovation and skill. Whereas her expertise as an educator and administrator have made her invaluable to our school, and whereas she is a highly respected educator who has served the district as a school psychologist, director of special services, acting superintendent, director of human resources and professional development, color guard advisor, Asian Culture Club and K-pop advisor, instituted and implemented the Special Education Parents Advisory Group, Employee Wellness Program, and served in leadership positions in the Somerset County Association of Directors of Special Services, NJ DOE Achievement Coaches, New Jersey Diverse and Learner Ready Teachers Initiative, New Jersey Diverse Educator Coaching Program, and CJ Pride. Nicole, I hope you're taking notes. And whereas, after an outstanding career as a school psychologist, advisor, and administrator who put people first and dedicated her life to helping others, she has decided to retire. Now therefore be it resolved that the Wachong Hills Regional Board of Education extends its heartfelt gratitude for Beth Scheiderman's 20 years of service and devotion to our school, and wishes her a healthy and happy retirement to pursue her passions, travel, and whatever adventures lie ahead.
Very out-of-body experience again. Thank you, thank you. I'd like to thank first my husband, Ward, who's over there filming me. In addition to the many activities I've enjoyed at Wachong Hills, Ward has been alongside of me as a band parent, taking me back and forth to board meetings on snowy evenings, and he's just been there for everything, so thank you very deeply to my husband. On a personal note, I'd like to thank the board. I'm going to cry at this point. I'm going to talk about how supportive you have been of me, but thank you for the education and the care that you provided to my children. I don't know if you realize, my son graduated from Wachong Hills in 2013, my daughter in 2015, and if I listed all of their activities that they enjoyed here at Wachong Hills, it would sound like this, from, again, marching band to sports, to school plays and choir, and the teachers who took them aside and talked to them and supported them at those times that you need when you're a teenager. And that all happens because the board is overseeing the schools and making sure that they are well-run, and they are. I grew up, this is more my professional and my thank you to you, I grew up down the hill in North Plainfield. I spent my time growing up looking up the hill and thinking about Wachong Hills, and thinking about, all those kids must all go to Princeton and Harvard and Yale, and how neat it must be to go to Wachong Hills. So in 2003, I became aware that there was an opportunity to be, in my mind, one of only two school psychologists who get to work at Wachong Hills, and lucky enough to have gotten that job, and I still feel that same level of pride in Wachong Hills as I did back in 2003, thinking, wow, I could be one of just two people who get to work there as a psychologist. And of course, it's been a beautiful fit for me, because I've just had so many opportunities to do so many things here with so many people. I also want to thank Dr. Patrick O'Halloran and Nicole Kelly, who tolerated my many visits to their doors those first few days, and answering all of my questions. I would have left if they weren't there to support me. All along, the board has been completely supportive of me, especially during my time as acting superintendent, Mr. Morrison taking all of my text messages, Mr. Stye is keeping me on the right path of, did you think of this, did you take care of that, and how can I help you, and of course, the, the opportunity that Dr. Jewitt afforded me in doing that.
I just had a baby, so she could be acting superintendent.
So thank you all. You're just doing amazing, amazing work here. I've benefited from that, I hope that I've contributed to that, and just thank you to everyone. Thank you.
I believe there's a motion to rescind your resignation. All right, again, congratulations to all of our faculty and staff that are retiring, and again, congratulations to our students, and looking forward to seeing you move the tassel on Thursday, so. We will now move on to our committee reports. Oh, I'm sorry. Oh, I'm sorry. We will take a five-minute break, because we have cake. So, cake break, and then we will resume the meeting at 8:15. All right, so before we move on to our committee reports, I would like to provide board members the opportunity for any comments they want to share regarding our retiring members.
Beth, again, thank you. When I first got elected to the board and I had my introductory meeting, it was a Zoom meeting at the time, and Liz had gone on it. She says, "Hi, how are you? Welcome aboard, and you won't see me for another six months or so." I'm like, "Oh, okay, great," was something I said. So, I was quickly introduced to Beth, and Beth, I thought you did a great job leading the district at that point. And you got thrown into the role as acting superintendent, and, of course, it was during a tenuous time with the COVID and all that situation. So, you had a couple of things working against you or for you, maybe. Thought you did a yeoman's job, certainly appreciate all of the work you've done and hearing everything you've done in the last 20 years. I only wish you the best, and, again, as a member of the community, thank you for everything you've done for the community, for the students, for the faculty, and for everyone, and you certainly will be missed, and, again, just thank you.
Any other board member? Janine, Ms. Potter?
I just want to say it's been a pleasure to work with you. You're extremely professional and competent, which I hate the word competent because it's accurate, but it doesn't sound like enough. But not everyone's competent. You are highly competent, and I echo Michael's sentiment. You did a fabulous job as assistant superintendent, and we're going to miss you.
Other comments? I will just close by adding my congratulations and thanks. Obviously, you know, over the time watching you and your role with, not only is it related to HR, but also leading the district during COVID, you did an exceptional job during a very extraordinarily difficult, challenging, and unscripted time in our history in education, and, you know, we'll always be grateful for the leadership that you showed then and grateful for the care that you've and professionalism that you brought to the district, and only wish you and Ward and your family all the best, and much joy and happiness and success in your future endeavors. So, congratulations and thank you. Now, committee reports. We will go to the Education Committee and Ms. Zober.
This will seem so dry and boring and dull after all of that. The Education Committee met on June 6th at 3:45. We talked about Career Day. Career Day was held on May 19th for 10th and 11th grade students, and it was the first one after a long break from holding Career Day due to COVID. Mr. Labrera and Ms. Phelan discussed the structure of the day, the panelists, and the areas of interest selected by the students, which included arts and communication, law and public safety, technology, business, and health and science. Panelists were primarily alumni and included a forensic scientist, a DNA analyst, who may have been the same thing, I'm not sure, a writer, a software analyst, a quant trading market maker, a culinary specialist, and a judge. Juniors were able to attend two sessions, and sophomores could attend one. The day went extremely well, and the students were engaged and enthusiastic. The administrators said they hope to have more panelists representing vocational fields in the future. They had invited several who would have had to miss work to attend. One committee member mentioned that some unions have people available to participate in career fairs, so that is something that will be explored for next year. Programs like this support our strategic plan goals two, pathways to educational success for all, and three, imagination, creativity, innovation, and critical thinking. We also discussed transition to semesters, which has now been communicated to parents, students, parents and students. So, communication has begun to incoming, to everybody, including incoming ninth graders, regarding transitioning from marking periods to semesters. An email blast went out on May 31st, the first of many communications to come. Starting in September 2023, we'll be moving from a four marking period system to a two semester model. This will allow for better instruction during the course of the school year, less stress for the students in relationship to artificial grading deadlines, and allow for increased ongoing student assessment. This transition supports our strategic plan goal one, social and emotional growth and wellness. We also had a follow-up conversation regarding summer reading, the whole summer reading vote from the last meeting. We continued the discussion regarding the selection of books for summer reading, and will further continue it in the fall. The administration is looking into modifying the process to select summer reading options to allow for increased student input. Rather than summarize the discussion, I thought I'd ask the committee members and ultimately the board members if they had any further comments upon reflection. Janine?
I do. I did not comment at the last meeting because I was surprised and kind of taken everything in, but I did do a little bit of research, and I don't want to beat the dead horse on this, but our sending districts have graphic novels on their summer reading lists. It's an acceptable form of a novel. It's widely accepted as a genre of novel. I also just think that we have to be careful as a board to keep our subjective opinions about anything, you know, related to any kind of art, entertainment, that's all very subjective. So, what one person likes, what one person doesn't like, has to stay out of the equation. And if we're going to vote no on something, I think we need to at least put forth as much evidence and research as we, as the people that are making these lists or making these decisions are doing as well. That's it.
Did anybody else from the committee have anything? Did anybody else from the board have anything?
All right. My comment was just that, you know, I also was focusing on the fact that we did pass a list because I desperately wanted a list passed, but I do feel like we kind of missed the mark on the book that we removed. This is my opinion. I do think we need more education about graphic novels and the merits of graphic novels. I know it was only two that mentioned that as their reason for voting no, but I feel like, you know, taking a book off the list of An Almost American Girl was really a missed opportunity. I did go out and borrow it from the library and read it. It's a novel about a girl who, from Korea, who came with her mother to really escape all of the stigma associated with being a single mother in Korea, to come to the United States, but then they came here, and the girl was entering high school. She didn't speak English. They went to a high school that didn't offer any ESL, no support for her. It talked about all of the struggles that she had with being bullied and being ostracized, and she had no family support. I mean, it touched on so many aspects of our diversity, equity, inclusion, social, emotional, wellness, strategic plan goals. Reading this book just made me think. Was anybody thinking about our strategic plan when they cast their vote? It's drummed into us. That's what we do. We came up with this, we went through a whole process of putting together the strategic plan. You know, Tim's always talking about when he has to write checks and approve funds, you know, that it's done with, it's done with a strategic plan in mind. The administration makes decision with a strategic plan in mind. And here we are, the Board of Education, ignoring our strategic plan when we're casting votes. And I just, I do think we really need to rethink what our role is, what our goals are, what our mission is, and at the same time, I'm hoping we can, you know, heal from this and work together as a team, because we are a team, and that's, you know, this didn't look good. And I think, you know, I've always been so proud to be part of this board, and I do hope we can work together.
Thank you. Moving on, we'll go to the Personnel Committee. Actually, we took care of that in a closed session. Operations, Mr. Bernburg.
Thank you, Mr. President. Operations met June 1st this year, a couple of weeks ago. Everybody seems to love the Performing Arts Center, so we are in the process of, and outsiders have noticed how great it is, so, as everyone knows, we rent it out, and we're in the process of redoing the contract with tightening some of the language, the procedures, how the center gets used, and discussing pay, excuse me, an increase in costs because we have not changed those in about 10 years. There's a bunch of policies that have come down yet again from the state. Most of them are mandatory, and we don't have to review or go over mandatory policies versus us wanting to have to have the policies. So, we discuss those. Yara Financials, again, kudos to Mr. Styes with regard to his financial stewardship of the district. He let us know that we're about a million or so in the positive with regard to excess funds, and most of that money will be moved and effect into the capital to help pay for the track project, which, again, had been discussed a couple of months ago in the budget and how significant of an expense that was, but with the excess funds that we have, we're in good shape with respect to that. We, again, during the budget time, we talked about some of the, instead of purchasing some of the equipment outright, was to have a four-year lease program. He got a bid from TD Equipment Finance for about 4.21% over the four years, and he's working on that to get that finalized. The final item we talked about was the naming rights, which we've spoken about before with regard to Dr. DeGancey. Again, we've gone over a couple of different options of how to properly honor him, and we are going to meet with Dr. DeGancey's family to figure out the appropriate location, whether it would be near the sports venue or near the west wing, which is where he hung out a lot. And that was the Operations Committee. Any questions?
Seeing none, you can move on to negotiations.
Okay, thank you. Negotiations. As everyone is aware, we've kind of been at a standstill with regard to negotiating the teacher's contract. We are almost at one year since not having, I guess, a new contract. We took it upon ourselves, together with the teachers, where the four of us who are on the negotiating committee, we met a week or two, I guess a week or two ago, with the negotiating committee of the teachers and the staff, and it was without administration. It was without counsel. It was without NJEA representatives. So, they had about nine or 10 members there. We had four. We sat down. We discussed various issues of concern in various ways that perhaps we can move this forward while other issues were playing out. And we're at a point now where we're just seeing if we can finalize some sort of, I guess, compromise at this point with regard to meeting, and hopefully moving forward, and hopefully at the next meeting, we'll have some finalization of how we will move forward. Any questions?
Thank you, Mr. Bernburg. Next is regionalization. I'm pleased to report that our regionalization feasibility study application that went to the state is now under final review, and we expect it to be approved by the end of the month. We've been advised to go ahead and begin the process of establishing our formal regionalization committee, which we will be doing over the next couple of weeks in coordination with the Watchung Borough Schools, who are our partner in the regionalization study. We will be looking at the structure of that committee and then convening the committee while the state is working through its paperwork items so we can begin the process of identifying potential vendors who will be responsible for actually conducting the feasibility study. The goal would be for us to identify a vendor and then have the study begin in earnest at the beginning of the school year or quickly thereafter. So, after two and a half years of talking about it, we're going to stop talking about it and start doing. So, we're excited to get final approval, but most importantly, very excited that we've gotten the green light to go ahead and put together a formal committee to start looking at this. So, that's the update I have on regionalization. Any questions? Great. Representative reports. We have one. Mr. Mayer, check.
Okay, so, on May 13th, I met with the New Jersey School Board Association Delegating Assembly Meeting. It was presided over by President Irene Lefebbe, and there was a report from Executive Director Timothy Purnell, which is promising. They are adding a new BA in residence. They are adding a new field service rep. They're adding an attorney and adding another county coordinator. So, it sounds like we're getting some support there. And we went through nominations and voted on a new slate of officers, voted in a new slate of officers, I should say, so that the new president is now Karen Cordellino from Montville Township Board of Education. The VP of County Activities is now Barry Fitzgerald from Anape Regional Board of Education. The VP of County Activities is now Barry Fitzgerald from Anape Regional Board of Education. The Vice President for Finance is Tom Connors from the Biscataway Township Board of Education. And the Office VP Legislature and Resolutions is Shanti Jackson from the Neptune Township Board of Education. And then there were several resolutions that were voted on. The first one was from the Hundred End Central Regional High School. They proposed a new policy, language limiting New Jersey mandated student assessments to one assessment, one assessment series that measures student proficiency in New Jersey's student learning standards that all other assessments would be left to the discretion of local districts. The assessment had passed. Second resolution was actually withdrawn. So the third resolution was from the Plainfield Board of Education. They proposed an additional policy language that would enhance and support student health services by including training for teaching staff and administrators in the provision of emergency support services, including CPR, first aid, AEDs, the emergent, the emergency administration of epinephrine, insulin, hallucinogen, and asthma treatments. And it also included expanding our own Janet's Law to after-school programs and provisions that the NJSBA encourages all new school, New Jersey schools to provide regular refresher courses and ongoing training opportunities to ensure that the staff and administrators maintain their proficiency in these critical health-related skills. And that resolution did pass. There was a fourth resolution voted, requested by Tom's River Regional Board of Education. They proposed a new policy language seeking the ability for boards of education that hold their elections in November to put a second question on the general election ballot that would apply for the next fiscal year rather than the current year as required by law, and that resolution also passed. There was one final resolution that they were putting through by the Union County Vocational Technical Board of Education. They proposed a revision to the bylaw clarifying the nominating committee's authority to consider vocational schools to be on, to participate in the nominating committee, and that one did not pass, it failed. Lastly, they did a reaffirmation of a sunset for Section 9 of the Manual of Organizations of Local Boards, and that passed. And that's the gist of it.
Great, thank you. Any questions for Mr. Mayorcheck? All right, we will then move on. Before we move into our first opportunity for public comment, I want to provide a reminder that community members are not only welcome but are encouraged to attend the board's public meetings and to speak on issues that are of importance to them. However, the board and the administration is deeply concerned with the members of the Muslim, Hindu, and Jewish Coalition of Wachong Hills' action during and toward the end of our May 23rd, 2023 meeting. As many people know, following the second opportunity for a public comment portion of the meeting, while board members were attempting to speak and conduct business, individuals repeatedly yelled from the audience, they heckled board members and used inappropriate language despite my repeated and respectful request for them to stop. As a result, the board was required to abruptly and prematurely adjourn the meeting. This is very unfortunate. Let me be clear. It is against the law in the state of New Jersey to interfere with the conducting of a public meeting. Such conduct by any community members will not be tolerated at future meetings. We have a board policy regarding public participation at meetings, and I'd like to review that now. The policy permits the presiding officer, which would be the president or the vice president sitting in the president's absence, to request any individual to leave the meeting when that person does not observe reasonable decorum, as well as to request the assistance of law enforcement officers in the removal of disorderly person when that person's conduct interferes with the disorderly progress of the meeting. Moreover, it is against the law for any individual to obstruct or physically interfere with a board meeting with the purpose to prevent or disrupt the meeting. The board will request the assistance of law enforcement to respond to any individual who seek to disrupt any future meetings. Those individuals will be removed without further warning. Likewise, the board will fully cooperate with law enforcement in any potential prosecution efforts. To assist in these efforts, we will have security present, present at our meetings moving forward, including uniformed officers. Any group that thinks disrupting a public meeting will somehow miraculously advance the cause they are attempting to promote, think again. Individuals and organizations that lower themselves to such tactics lose all credibility with the entity that they are trying to influence. The actions of the Coalition on May 23rd are a perfect example of this. A letter outlining our concerns and highlighting our policies has been sent to the Coalition. A letter has been sent to the person who stole the gavel informing them that they are banned from our campus, and a letter is being sent to the parent who was leading the disruption of the meeting. Again, I reiterate that the board welcomes all members of the community, the Coalition, and others to attend board meetings and to speak on matters of importance to them. Healthy and respectful discourse often leads to better decision-making. However, unnecessary and inappropriate disruptions will not be tolerated. With that, before we move into public comment, I would welcome any comments from our board members. Mr. Galick.
Just want to verbalize, just want to verbalize my support of that statement and say that we need civility and decorum to work through these issues and that's required. So I look forward to a peaceful existence going forward.
Thank you. Other board comments? Mr. Bernberg.
We live in a society that has certain rules, again, certain decorum. It's important to have some rules. You have some guidance, you know, how we live our lives, how we conduct ourselves. Some societies don't have those rules. Some societies, you know, it's anarchy, you know, mob rule, might is right. I'm not necessarily saying those societies are wrong, but that's not our society. I believe our society is the right one, the society of rights, the society that allows bullying. I don't buy into that. We have certain policies with regard to our students that don't allow bullying. I would expect similar with regard to the public. So it's just important that we have certain processes in place and certain ways to conduct ourselves and certain ways to achieve the goals. We live by those rules, certainly amongst the board, and I would expect others, certainly in society, whether it's election of officers, public other rules, and it's what's expected here. And hopefully going forward, we have the same respect.
Thank you. Any other comments? Great. Seeing none, this is the first opportunity for public comment. The first public comment period will be limited to agenda items for this meeting only. The second public comment period will be open to any topic. All comments are limited to five minutes. First opportunity for public comment. Seeing none, we will close the first opportunity for public comment and move to board discussion on future action items. Are there any comments on any of the future action items? Right, seeing none. We can move on to our agenda items, and while we are working on our agenda items, I certainly invite the two of you, you're welcome to, to depart. I know that you probably have more interesting things to do at this point in time. So feel free to leave if you wish, but you're welcome to stay, so.
Should you choose to take it? You need to rest up for graduation practice tomorrow. Congratulations to both of you.
Mr. President, I'd like to move items A1 through A5.
A1 through A5, second. Discussion. Roll call, Mr. Steis.
Mr. Bernberg. Mr. Maggio.
Yes.
Mr. Galick. Ms. Lee. Mayorcheck.
Yes.
Ober. Potter.
Yes.
Prassa.
Yes.
And Mr. Morris.
Yes.
Motion carries. You really, you really should.
Oh, you can't. No, you need to.
You really shouldn't.
Motion on A6, second.
Second.
Discussion. Roll call.
Mr. Bernberg. Mr. Maggio.
Yes.
Mr. Galick. Ms. Lee.
Yes.
Mayorcheck.
Yes.
Ober.
Yes.
Prassa.
Yes.
And Mr. Morris.
Yes.
Mr. President, I'd like to move items C2 through C27.
C28.
Oh, sorry, C28.
C2 through C28, second. Discussion. Roll call.
Mr. Bernberg. Mr. Maggio.
Yes.
Galick.
Yes.
Ms. Lee.
Yes.
Mayorcheck.
Yes.
Ober. Potter.
Yes.
Ms. Prassa.
Yes.
And Mr. Morris.
Yes.
Mr. President, I'd like to move D1 through D4.
D1 through D4, second. Discussion. Roll call.
Mr. Bernberg. Mr. Maggio.
Yes.
Mr. Galick.
Yes.
Ms. Lee.
Yes.
Mayorcheck.
Yes.
Ober. Potter.
Yes.
Prassa.
Yes.
And Mr. Morris.
Yes.
D5, second.
Second.
Thank you. Discussion. Roll call.
Mr. Bernberg. Mr. Maggio.
Yes.
Mr. Galick. Ms. Lee.
Yes.
Mayorcheck.
Yes.
Ober. Prassa.
Yes.
And Mr. Morris.
Yes. And before we move on, I just do want to highlight item D3. The board accepts with gratitude a donation in the amount of $5,000 from Eli Manning to be used for non-personal expenses associated with the Wachong Hills Regional High School football program. So thank you to Mr. Manning and obviously.
Go Giants.
And obviously our football coach, who might have had a little something to do with that. So Coach Sully, so we appreciate that as well. So we are now going to move into our second opportunity for public comment. The second opportunity is for any, any item whatsoever. Please come to the podium, state your name, your full name, and the town of residence.
Hello, good evening. Good evening, Mary Levonian, Mary Levonian Long Hill Township. I also wanted to follow up on the last Board of Education meeting. I wish we all lived in a society where everyone had the same rights and where everyone could celebrate holidays that are important to them. For instance, I wish we had a Chinese New Year celebration, a holiday that is important of many of my children's friends and to our family because my two boys speak and write Chinese, who love the culture, and who celebrate the Lunar New Year for the last nine years since my both boys are Murray Hill Chinese School students in the traditional class. It's an amazing school, by the way. We have another important holiday in our family that is not on the school's calendar, and I would love it to be there someday, but I think right now it's better to, I would like to focus on the thing that concern every child, parent, and educator in this school. At the last Board of Education meeting, we were at the very alarming point of discussing the books list, book list, and taking a book off that list. Even after Mr. Aquaria explained the importance of all those books and how carefully our English department made that list and that the teachers believed those books would be beneficial for our, for our children. Even after all that, some members of the board were questioning it because apparently those books are not the ones that their generation would read. It's unbelievable. What's next? Banning more books? Interfering with the social studies and science curriculums? Actually, this is beyond alarming. I put that graphic book, Almost American Girl, which was excluded from the list. My boys already read it and they both loved it. It's a great book. Also, last year, my children read Fun Home, which was banned a couple of years ago in our school. We will continue to buy more of those books as gift, as gift, yeah. And of course, there is this year's number one priority in our school, which I already addressed a few times, the fact that our teachers still don't have a contract. Just think about it. For the entire year, our teachers didn't have a new contract for the whole school year, and they still don't have it. I hope it will change soon. So right now, I wish we could focus on these issues and postpone all other demands because it's overshadowing the most important problems in our school right now. And at the end, I would like to say one more time that it's the well-known fact that the way America treats its teachers is very different from the rest of the progressive world. I wish we all would get frustrated and rally because such important people in our lives, our children's teachers, have to go through this most stressful situation. Teachers are people who are as important in our teacher, children's lives as their families. Some of our children spend even more time with their teachers than they do with their parents. Teachers are the people that we entrusted our kids to. In our school, there are people who our children love and have tremendous respect for. So it's frustrating to know that our teachers work without a new contract. It's frustrating to know that the board can interfere and ban books according to their political views and religious beliefs. This is unacceptable. We send our teachers, our children to school, to school to learn, and we are extremely lacking that in this particular school, they learn from the best. And by the best, I mean not only professionally, but also in terms of human qualities that serve as an example for our children. They are truly fortunate. So I wish we all appreciate our teachers as much as they deserve, which I don't think we do now. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment? Seeing none, I will close this second opportunity for public comment. And before we move on, I want to correct a couple of misstatements that were made from the podium. First and foremost, this district has never, ever banned a book. We have never banned a book. We do not ban books in this community. And just because something is removed from a reading list does not mean that the book itself was banned. The book Fun Home was not banned. We created an alternative process that allowed students to be able to choose which of the books that they wanted to study, which included the book Fun Home. We just made sure that it wasn't required reading for everyone, but students had the opportunity to choose from a series of books which included Fun Home and that the faculty made sure that the groups that were studying those books were balanced. So this idea that somehow the Fun Home book was banned is completely not true. The idea that the book, the graphic novel that was removed from a reading list was banned from the district is not true. We don't ban books. So wherever this idea is coming from and whoever's talking about it, it's not true. So I think it's really important in this day and age that we're thoughtful and careful with the type of language that we choose because when you start talking about banning books, it creates all sorts of other rhetoric and all sorts of other consternation out in the community. This district has not banned a book. Now, to be clear, as a board of education, we have the complete authority to determine what is or is not included in the school. That is our responsibility. That is what we are elected to do. So if something ends up not being a part of the curriculum, doesn't necessarily mean that it's banned. It's just, it has been determined that it is not appropriate, you know, for whatever the, whatever type of educational program it was being provided. So I want to be really, really clear that that is not something that we engage in, in this district. Do we have robust discussions about what we teach and how it's taught and other types of things, both in public and of this community. So, I would just urge caution when we're starting to use inflammatory language when you come up for public comment in the future. With that, we will move on unless there are any other board members that wish to comment. Otherwise, we will move on to other business. Do we have any other business from board members?
I just want to thank the Project Graduation Committee, who's doing a spectacular job. Um, I know my son personally is having a great time, and there's more to come. So, thank you, everyone who was in charge and involved in Project Graduation.
Thank you. Great. So, we will now move into our interviews for a board vacancy. And I, so, you're going to need to get organized here a little bit. Mr. Size?
In your folders, there's a friend that told me, the green paperclip. Look for the green paperclip. That's where all the, as we have three board members here, uh, three board members to interview. Candidates, I'm sorry. And the order doesn't, I guess if...
I think we'll go alphabetically.
Yeah. So, that would be Mr. Riley.
Mr. Riley, you will be first.
Yeah, if you can go to the podium, Mr. Riley.
Yeah, go to the podium.
And thanks for coming.
Good evening, members of the board.
Thank you, Mr. Riley. We welcome, welcome you, and we're certainly grateful for your interest to serve, uh, on the board, uh, to fill the vacancy, uh, that we have from Warren Township. Um, so, if you have any opening comments, given to you, and then we have board members that will have questions for you to answer, um, and it'll be the same format that we use for the other members as well.
Sure. Well, uh, I saw the notice on the website. I'm checking on the website. I saw the notice. Uh, I was available. Um, I thought I'd volunteer. I come with no specific agenda. I think it's important for a person to serve his community. Uh, I serve as a member of the Board of Health in Warren. I'm president of the Middlebrook Regional Health Commission. I've served on the, uh, Warren Youth Basketball Association. I've been a youth coach, et cetera. Give you a little 60-second, uh, bio. Born and raised in Elizabeth, New Jersey. Father, a city fireman. Mother, a homemaker. Um, three siblings. My oldest brother, Richard, was killed in Vietnam in 1968. Attended St. Peter's Prep in Jersey City, um, then went to Seton Hall University, graduated in 1971. Taught mathematics at Thomas Jefferson High School in Elizabeth for a year, then went on to Rutgers Law School. Finished up at Rutgers Law School in 1975, was admitted to the bar after taking the exam. Clerk for Superior Court Judge in Elizabeth for one year. Then I went and was employed, did defense litigation work for about four years, four and a half years. Then I opened my own firm in 1980, practiced 42 years with my own firm, sole proprietor, and recently retired. I'm married, a beautiful wife, Nancy, three children, uh, all of whom are graduates of Watchon Hills. And Nancy, I don't know whether any of you recognize the name, but Nancy taught in Long Hill for over 20 years, uh, at Central Middle School. So, I think I have something to add here, even though it's just a short stint from now to the end of the year, but I thought I would volunteer. You were looking for somebody. Any questions? I'm happy to answer them.
Thank you, Mr. Riley. Again, you told us that you're seeking an appointment for the vacancy. Can you tell us, is there a particular issue that's motivating you to serve on the board?
No. I, I have no, I come with no particular issue that I want to sort out or, or make a stand on. I'm like a politician. You got a straight answer, right?
Are there any issues that you think that the district needs to address, um, in regards to its academic programs or offerings at this time or changes?
No, I haven't studied that. I mean, all I can tell you is that, uh, my wife and I were pleased with the education that our three children received here, um, notwithstanding the fact that I attended Catholic schools. I'm a firm believer in public schools. Um, I don't know how you feel about it, but I oppose charter schools. I think that, you know, boards of education are, represent the community, and they should be in control of the school systems. I don't, I don't believe in setting up these private schools and diverting public money to charter schools. Please.
Also, thank you for being here, Mr. Riley. Um, how does this, as a board member, how do you think a school board balances the need to provide quality education with the need and burden to the local taxpayers?
Well, that's a, a big, a big question. Uh, I, I think the answer to do it, to do it as best as possible, I would say, right? I mean, uh, they have to take that into account. The, uh, the, uh, the tax burden that's imposed by the schools is the biggest tax burden of all on the taxpayers, right? It, it, it's what, about 80% of the entire tax burden? So, I think you have to be conscientious in deciding how to, um, how to decide that, but at the same time, you have to balance, uh, cost against quality. I mean, I'm sitting here, I hear that you're, um, trying to finalize the contract with teachers. It's, it's going to be difficult. We've had inflationary spiral, uh, now, and I'm sure, uh, I'm sure the teachers are looking for substantial increases, and, uh, the board's going to have tough decisions to make. I don't know whether I've answered your question. I don't know whether there is an easy answer.
Thank you, Mr. Riley. Uh, just one final question. Do you plan on running for the full term?
No. I doubt it. I mean, if you really fell in love with me and you begged me, really, and you said, gee, we've got to have you on the board, maybe, but I, I can't see myself running for election.
Thank you. Okay. Thank you. Do you have any closing comments you'd like to make?
No, I, I appreciate the opportunity to reply. I think I, I have something to add, and, uh, I think, uh, from what I can see, you have a talented group here, and it would be a privilege serving with you, uh, for the balance of the year. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Mrs. Trumpor?
Welcome, and again, thank you for putting in your, your name into consideration for this, this position. And I meant to mention this earlier, but, you know, certainly, um, it's, takes a certain type of individual to volunteer, to make this type of commitment, uh, to volunteer and service to the community. So, for all of our candidates, someone to express our gratitude and thanks for coming forward. So, um, go ahead, uh, opening statement before any questions.
I'm a 30-year-plus resident of Warren. I've had three children go through the Watchon Hills and the Warren School Systems. I came from a smaller school system that was well-regarded, and in many aspects, I actually think Watchon Hills is better than the school system I came from because of the opportunities and the ability, um, all the different acts, aspects from the arts to the music to the science. My children have greatly benefited from the school. As you can probably tell with my resume, I have always been a, someone that has been volunteering, whether it is from Girl Scouts, Boy Scouts, sports teams, um, whenever there's been a need, there's always been, I've kind of always just slowly stepped up and helped. Um, and you'll notice, though, one of the big things is I tend not to leave. I stay because I enjoy it. So, I currently still work with Boy Scouts, even though my son has been out of Watchon Hills. He's almost 30 now. But I still continue to work with them and work with the young men that come through Watchon Hills as an Eagle Advisor, to get an idea of what's going on because it is very rewarding. The girls, I still am working with the local level to help where they need it. More importantly, at the council level, also seeing these young women come through as they're applying for Gold Awards and their proposals and getting their final reports and getting the opportunity to interview them and see their growth and to help guide them. And it, an interesting insight, too, of what various schools have and where these girls see huge needs and where they can make a difference. Um, I just continue to, to work on that. So, um, even in high school, I was active here with the youth sports, continued on, I continued on even after they left for about a year afterwards. So, I feel like I have a different, that's just more of my personality in doing that and balancing. I've always been someone that, when there's an opportunity, even if it is something that's not a benefit to my children, if it's a benefit to the community as a whole, to the program as a whole, having to step back and view that from that big lens, I think it's very important and is one of the key things I think I can bring to the board.
Great, thank you. And now, our board members have some questions.
For the purpose of consistency, and, uh, Mr. Vedder, you'll benefit from this as well, uh, again, explain why you're seeking the appointment to this vacancy, and are there any particular issues that's motivating you? Any issues that you see us dealing with that you may be able to contribute?
So, I have, um, part of my weekly routine at work is I will listen to the K through eight, the Watchon Hills High School Board, I'll watch the Township Committee Board meeting videos, just to kind of, it's, it's my little podcast to listen to what's going on. So, I feel like I kind of been following it. Um, overall, I feel like the board's been really, since I've been in Watchon Hills and Warren, they've always been a board on really good footing and good track, had their head focused. Um, I think that the, the guidelines of, of your communication, the mental health, they're all things I see echoed. So, just feeling that more that, yes, I can contribute to that and continue. Is there anything in particular? No.
Uh, as a Boy Scout mom myself, I thank you for your continued service. Uh, do you think that, are there any particular issues that you think we need to address in regards to our academic program or offerings?
So, nothing that isn't already known, that you're not already working on. I think that one of the big strategic goals has been communication. It's, I think it's a hard goal, um, and we see, see steps forwards and then we see, you know, steps back in terms of different areas of communication. That, I think, is one of the big, big issues. It's probably, it's a long-term issue, it's always going to be academically. Yeah, overall, there's always been forward and doing well, um, listening to the, the teachers when they come and they talk, and they, it was very interesting to hear how the, the summer reading had grown from when my children were in school, what the, with the motivating factors to come up with that list, to really how it's evolved now to make it more enjoyable for the students.
I guess the overwhelming question, uh, how, would you like to comment on balancing the responsibility here to the responsibility to taxpayers?
It's really hard. Um, one thing I've been impressed with, um, and this goes way back, I want to say back to about when the PAC was first built. Since that point going forward, there's been a concerted effort to always have a good capital funds. So, when emergencies come up, when you, things happen, we're not all of a sudden having that last-minute rush and feeling we have to raise taxes. So, having that, that forward-thinking, that long-range plan, I think is the biggest thing that, that a board can do in keeping those taxes in check.
Thank you again, Mrs. Trumpor. Um, the same question I asked before, do you plan on running again for the full term in the fall?
I don't know. My honest answer, um, yeah, this was kind of a gut. I knew I could commit to six months. I would think I could, but I think my gut has to, right now, and I know there's only like a month or two that you have for that decision, but I, I don't take on volunteer roles lightly. So, I know I can say, yes, I can do six months. I haven't decided if I would want to continue to do and take that on or not for three years.
Thank you. Great. And just as a point of clarity, the petitions are due by the end of July, so, it's a month. So, so...
No pressure.
No pressure, no nothing, but...
Okay.
Great, well, thank you, Heather.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Vedder.
Good evening.
Welcome.
I hope this isn't a roast. I hope this is an interview.
Okay.
Uh, George Vedder, I live in town, grew up in Mountside, New Jersey. I volunteered for a fire department when I was a youngster, um, went to college. When I called about, uh, volunteering for this position, Tim asked me if I had a resume. I said, I don't. I've never really written a resume before. So, thankfully, I have twin girls that just attended this university four years ago, uh, university, this campus. Um, one of my daughters just graduated college, and she helped me with the resume, so I was grateful for that. I do believe in giving back, being civil and volunteering. I have volunteered on the sewer board for the town, the open space committee for the town, and the last time I lived in, I volunteered for a fire department. So, I do believe in giving back. I guess if you guys want to ask questions?
Sure.
Again, is there any particular issue that's motivating you to, uh, serve on the board?
I would say no on that.
I'm having a better question.
Any issues you think we need to address with our academic programming or any changes?
I'd have to get up to speed and, uh, kind of study what you guys are thinking, but, um, I can say this, uh, my dad's died, died when he was 16, and he was without guidance for a while in his life. He ended up being drafted in the U.S. Army, and then he ended up going to college on the GI Bill, and he became a school teacher, and he had 32 credits beyond a master's. And one time I said to him, Dad, why don't you want to be a principal or something, you know? And he said, Son, I want to be in the classroom. I like teaching the kids. And, uh, he did not want to become a principal and move up the ladder, and that was his philosophy. My sister is a school teacher in Colorado, um, so I've been exposed to the school teaching side. Um, I, uh, you know, I've heard the stories at the kitchen table, you know, how hard it is to teach, and so I appreciate for the teachers' aspect. I, myself, have worked without a contract in a public employment, so I've, I've felt that. My advice to the teachers, keep doing your job, and things will work out. Um, as far as like budgets, I know you're going to ask me that. I would treat...
Carol, check it out.
Go ahead, Carol.
Who wants to ask that one? You, okay. Uh, I realize that school taxes are about 65% of, um, you know, the municipal thing, and 65% of our taxes are going through the school districts. I would look at politics or budgets, it's kind of like a rubber band. Somebody told me this one time. You can only stretch the rubber band in one direction too much, you know, public safety, education, road department. So, the rubber bands can only go so far in one direction, and they get pulled back again. So, you got to, you know, and I, I agree with Ms. Riley's statement about, you know, it's a balance, you know? It's, we had to keep our taxes in check to be able to afford to live in these towns and have younger couples coming to our towns, but we also have to provide the facilities, the quality of staff, and, um, you know, to maintain things. So, it is a balancing act, um, which you have to get educated on to make those decisions, you know? But I have seen this building improve since, I don't live too far away, I'm about a mile away, I probably drive past this building every day, and I have seen, you know, the building improve, I have seen the grounds improve, the staff's fantastic, and, um, you know, as a taxpayer, I'm very proud of, uh, everything you guys have done.
Thank you. And just a, the one final question, do you plan on running again in the fall for the full term?
Um, not a politicky guy. If there's a job to do, you know, my attendance record, when I do volunteer for something, I do make sure I have good attendance, and I make sure I read these packets and stuff, you know, try to make informed decisions. I would consider it yes.
Thank you, and just the one final question, do you plan on running again in the fall for the full term?
I'm not a politicky guy. If there's a job to do, you know, my attendance record, when I do volunteer for something, I do make sure I have good attendance, and I make sure I read these packets and stuff, you know, try to make informed decisions. I would consider it yes.
Thank you.
Okay.
Great, thank you very much.
All right, thank you for your time.
Appreciate it. All right, so what we, what's going to happen now, the board is going to move into executive session. You all can stay here, we have a room off to the side where we can go in, we'll deliberate and then we'll come back out and have a vote at that particular point in time. So I'll need a motion to go into executive session. Second? All right, we will be back shortly.